Members of the Portsmouth City Council, honored guests, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm LaVora Space Deputy City Manager for the City of Portsmouth, and it is indeed an honor and a privilege for me to officially welcome you to this Oath of Office ceremony. We trust that you have had a wonderful holiday season, and we wish you peace, prosperity, and longevity in the new year. We will begin the program with the posting of the colors by the Public Safety Joint Honor Guard. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. What an auspicious occasion to close the year of 2018 and add another chapter to our historical past. The members of the Portsmouth City Council are committed to bold leadership for the future, and they also share a sincere passion for Portsmouth. Today's ceremony is a celebration of citizens just like you who wish to encourage and nurture the ideas of fellow citizens, our employees, business leaders, and faith-based community to embrace new endeavors towards shaping the vision for the future. I would like at this time to make a few introductions of elected officials that are with us today. From the Portsmouth City Council, Mayor John L. Rowe Jr., Vice Mayor Elizabeth Simmons, Councilman Ray Smith Sr., Councilman Nathan Clark, and Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. Also in attendance, we have Senator Louie L. Louise Lucas, Delegate Stephen Heriting, Judge Johnny Morrison, Mr. Paige Cherry, City Attorney. I mean, I'm sorry, not City Attorney, City Treasurer. The Money Man. Mrs. Cynthia Morrison, Clerk of the Circuit Court. Commissioner of the Revenue, Mr. Frankie Edmondson. Our Sheriff, Mr. Michael Moore. Dr. Lydia Patton, City Manager. Mr. Solomon Ashby, he is our City Attorney. Mr. Billy Holt, Mr. Billy Holt, City Assessor. And from the Portsmouth School Board, we have Mrs. Costella Williams and Mrs. Sarah Duncan Heinz. Okay, and now the moment that we've all been waiting for. This evening, the oaths will be administered by our City Clerk, Mrs. Deborah White. Councilman-elect Paul Battle is joined by his wife, Kye, who will be holding the Bible. Sharing this moment with the Councilman-elect Battle is his daughters, Jadis, Nadia, and Alora, his brother William, and his mother-in-law, Lilian Day. We would also like to ask his family members, very close and very close friends, to stand who are in the audience to be recognized as well. Following the Oath of Office, Reverend Robert Earls will offer prayers and will receive remarks from Councilman Battle.
Sir, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, in your name...
I, Paul J. Battle...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially discharge...
And impartially discharge...
And perform all the duties...
And perform all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As City Councilman...
As City Councilman...
Of the City of Portsmouth...
Of the City of Portsmouth...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations, sir.
At this time, Reverend Bluff will give prayer.
Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we thank you for this important moment, this auspicious occasion, for this opportunity. As we stand now even before your presence, lifting up Brother Paul Battle, who now will serve as a council member of this city, this great city of Portsmouth. We pray your blessings now, God, that you would honor his commitment and his devotion to service while serving this city. Oh, God, we thank you. We thank you that his first love is you, and his second love is his family, and his third being the City of Portsmouth. God, we look to you because we know that unless you watch over this city, the watchman waketh but in vain. So help him, oh God, that he might watch over the affairs of this city, and yet may his watching over the affairs of this city not be in vain because you are his love. Oh, God, we thank you now, as you shall give him wisdom and insight for executing the office of Councilman here in the City of Portsmouth. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the citizens of Portsmouth. And let me start by saying, I'm not an auditor, and I won't profess to be. But what I do bring and have are the skills to succeed, to help succeed, to put people in the position to succeed. In our city, we've forgotten about our youth. Every family is not the same. By that I mean, some of us can give our kids a better boost into succeeding in life than others. So if that's the case, we have to make sure that we have the nets to put under those families less fortunate than we are. Because it's a natural fact. Nobody care a lot for anything that doesn't take care of its young, its family, its youth. So that's my primary intent because that's where growth begins. In reference to business, I've been a businessman all my life with my father. It started, I worked at his store when I was five or six years old. I have nothing against business. And our father knows that I want business for this city. But I don't want it for advantage out. I want it for advantage in or even. We have seniors that we have to take care of. There's that thing again, take care of our human services. We have to do that, or no one's gonna have the respect. For us, as a group, as a city, as our community, we have to stick together. We have to fight together. We have to go in the same direction. I'm a very flexible person. I'm gonna always be that way. And I want your prayers. But that's not it. Thank you for them. And they're the spearhead to everything. But us getting out, doing it, is the most important thing. You know, a lot of times, we forget when we get involved with our city corporation, meaning we get engaged with the different things between the different cities, with the collaborative efforts. That's great, but I'm thinking about Portsmouth at all times. As they are, we've just had an example of that. We've been trying to get the race, the riverboats for 20 years. And what did Norfolk do? You see what I'm saying? We can do business with them, but we must understand that it's all in for Portsmouth. One thing that I'm gonna say, and then I'm gonna give it to everybody else. We allow our surrounding neighbors to outplay us. And that's not good. A perfect example is, we're a military town. At one point, when the military came to Tyewater or came in this area, we would jump from 100,000 to 125,000 citizens. Now, we got to pump our USOs. We have to get engaged to bring those young men who docked our ports back to our city. And say Norfolk and Virginia Beach took those folks right from under our nose, and we never noticed it. These are the alertnesses that we have to bring to the city. Thank you. May God bless us.
Holding the Bible for Councilman-elect Shannon Glover is his wife, Paula. And sharing in this life-changing event we have in the audience, and we ask them to stand, are his son Denzel and his wife, Taisha, and their children, Mason and Myla. His daughter, Alana, and his mother-in-law, Margaret Meadows, are also here. Following the Oath of Office, Reverend Beverly Edmonds will offer prayer, and we will receive remarks from Councilman Glover.
Sir, if you please, raise your hand, your right hand, and place your left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me, please. I, in your name...
I, Shannon Elish Glover...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially discharge...
And impartially discharge...
And perform all the duties...
And perform all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As City Councilman...
As City Councilman...
Of the City of Portsmouth...
Of the City of Portsmouth...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations.
Let us pray. Almighty and Father God, we come this day with grateful hearts. We give you all the praise and we give you all the glory for this time that you have allowed us to be here in the presence of these people, Father God. And then, Lord God, we thank you for City Councilman-elect Shannon Glover. And God, we ask you right now, did you put a hedge around him, Father God? And did you cover him from head to toe, Lord God? And that you lead him, God, and that his steps that you have ordered, Father God, that you have ordained for this time, that he be obedient to your word, Father God? And Lord God, we ask you right now, in the name of your Son, Jesus, that he guide this city, God, by your wisdom and your strength, Father God? And when he looks for strength, God, when he looks for direction, God, that he will direct himself to your word, Father God? That he will fall on his knees and ask you for the direction he's supposed to go in, God? And we know, Father God, if he does these things, our city would be the better for it, Father God. And now, Lord God, we just ask you that you unite all of us in one, Father God? That what we want, desire for this city will be a beautiful beam of light to the world, Father God? That where there is injustice, God, we will bring justice. Where there is war, we will bring peace, Father God? And where there is hate, God, we will bring love. And we ask you right now to eschold upon him the things that he needs to do, God, to commit himself to do just those things, Father God? We acknowledge you with all that we do, and we love you, and this is our prayer. Amen.
Wow. This is a wonderful moment. And first of all, I want to thank Reverend Edmonds for that wonderful prayer. I want to thank my family for all of their encouragement and support. And I want to thank each and every one of you. I am grateful right now. I'm grateful for the reason that 28 years ago, my wife and I landed here in Portsmouth, Virginia. I was in service to the United States Navy, and I am glad that we decided to make Portsmouth, Virginia, our home. We were married in Portsmouth. Both of our children, Denzel, who was serving in the United States Army, and our Alana, and our daughter, Alana, who is a second-year law student at the University of Baltimore, were born right here in the City of Portsmouth. People ask me all the time, Shannon, why did you choose Portsmouth? Because I had a choice. And it sounded like, when I was taking the oath, that I was doing a re-enlistment thing. So I'm glad that that's not gonna happen. But in any event, I had a choice to come here. The reason I chose Portsmouth is because Portsmouth reminded me of the city in which I grew up in. It was a city on the water, Erie, Pennsylvania. If you've ever been there, you know what it's like. And in addition to that, it was a historic city. So when the detailer said, "You have a choice to go to Portsmouth, Virginia, and you can go to Portsmouth Naval Hospital," I jumped at the opportunity. And as Paul and I began to build our life here, we understood that it wasn't just about the opportunity to be a part of a great community, but it was about an opportunity to raise our family around good people here in the City of Portsmouth. And more importantly, an opportunity for us to be engaged in the process and serve our community to make it a better place. Because ultimately, if you live in a place, if you want to see that place better, you should be required to participate in the process of helping it to become better. While we were raising our children the whole time, we were instilling in them an idea of service, not just for the benefit of themselves, but ultimately for the benefit of others. Not to belabor the point, but I'm a child of the 60s. I was born in 1965. We are all aware that there were a lot of things going on in the United States of America in 1965, right? But one of the things that had the most profound effect on me and my life, and why I choose a life of service, is because when I read and I heard Dr. Martin Luther King's speech, I've been to the mountaintop. Now, most of you know Dr. King gave that speech in Memphis, Tennessee, on April 3, 1968. We all know what happened on April 4, 1968. Some of you remember it very vividly. Dr. King was assassinated in Memphis, Tennessee. But the backstory of that speech, the speech I have right here, of which I read every year, I take it out, take it out and read it every year to remind me of my responsibility to humanity. When Dr. King was talking in the speech, you know, he talked about the Good Samaritan, and how that Good Samaritan, he was unlike anybody else because others walked by and saw that person, and he, but that Good Samaritan put his own life at risk to help. Much like, we are Good Samaritans, and we all strive to put ourselves at risk to help our neighbors in many ways. But the point I want to make, the backstory is, prior to him making that speech, there were many threats on his life. And you know, Dr. King, he took all of that under consideration. All of his lieutenants said, "Doc, you shouldn't make this speech. You shouldn't go to Memphis, Tennessee." And you know what Dr. King said? He said, "You know, all of what you guys are saying about the threat to my life is true. But here's the point in which I'm gonna make to you. That I can't worry about what's going to happen to me if I go to Memphis. I must be more concerned with what's going to happen with those striking sanitation workers if I don't go." And so, we know the end of the story. But by going, he gave the ultimate sacrifice of service to his fellow man to make a difference in someone else's life. So tonight, my challenge to each one of you in our city, my friends and my neighbors, the Portsmouth family, I challenge you to make a commitment to bring your talents and your skills to the table to help us, your City Council, become and build the city that we all desire to see and live in. Thank you, and God bless you, and happy new year.
Holding the Bible for Councilman Bill Moody is his wife, Jenny. And joining him today, and we ask them to stand to be recognized, is his daughter, Cindy, and his brothers, James, Steve, and Kenny. Following the Oath of Office, Reverend Denny Hollowell will offer prayer, and we will receive remarks from Councilman Moody.
Raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me, please.
I, in your name...
I, in my name. We need a lighter moment here, I believe. I, William Edward Moody, Jr.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Impartially discharge...
And impartially discharge...
And perform all the duties...
And perform all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As City Councilman...
As City Councilmember...
Of the City of Portsmouth...
Of the City of Portsmouth...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God, your word says to ask for wisdom, and it will be given, and that righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. Lord, I pray that you give wisdom to this public servant, Bill Moody. The Bible says to pray for those in authority, that it would be well with us, and that you set people in authority. I pray that you guide and direct and order the steps of Bill Moody, as well as other city leaders, that our city might be not only well-run, but pleasing to God. I pray in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Hollowell, and thank each of you for being here tonight. Reverend Hollowell, or Denny, as I call him, we go back to Cherslin High School, to 1964. So we've had a long friendship. In fact, we played in a band. Denny far exceeded my instrumental abilities on alto saxophone. You know, this is a very special night. In fact, I told Deborah, the Bible I brought here tonight for the Oath of Office is the one I used in 1998. And I had the program from 1998. Little did I know that that was really Deborah's first Oath of Office ceremony. So let's give Deborah a hand here tonight. Deborah makes a lot of things possible, believe me. And Shannon and Councilman Battle will certainly find that out, as we all do, as we come on to council. You know, the election is over. You know, when you run for office, you're backed by a team. And obviously, the person running for office is in the spotlight, sometimes in the heat. It's up to them to sell their abilities. But you know, after the election, things do change. You become part of a team. You're not backed by a team. You become a member of a team. And having spent a lot of time with Shannon and Paul Battle, probably a lot more time than I spent with Jenny in the last few months, I'm very optimistic that this council is gonna be a good team. I think we come from different experiences, different walks of life. But I'm very optimistic that this council is gonna do some great things. Thank you. You know, probably my strong suit is common sense. And my common sense is speaking to me and is telling me that Ron Houghton has a lot of food out there. And probably the only thing standing between you and that good food out there is Bill Moody. So I'm not gonna talk for a long time, but this is my 20th year on City Council. In fact, the 20th was July the 1st. And one thing that hasn't changed is the org chart. At the top of the org chart is you folks, the citizens of the city. I will continue, you have my commitment, that I'll continue to be responsive. I'll, to the best of my ability, as the oath said, I will try to help you with any problem that you're having. Above all, I've got two ears and one mouth. And I will make sure those ears listen more than I talk to your concerns. But once again, thanks for coming out on this Friday evening. And I look forward to being a member of this outstanding team for the next... And I look forward to being a member of this outstanding team for the next four years. Thank you very much.
In closing, the members of the Portsmouth City Council would like to thank you for attending this very special ceremony. You are also invited to attend the City Council Reorganization Meeting on Wednesday, January 2nd, at 1:00 here in the City Council Chamber. Light refreshments are available at noon. Okay, like a change to that. You are cordially invited to attend the reorganization meeting at noon here in the City Council Chamber on Wednesday, January 2nd. Light refreshments are available in the lobby. And we, again, would like to say best wishes for a happy new year, and safe travels, and good night.